Call this meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 27th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones and the meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minutes, meeting minutes for a number of meetings. We'll go one at a time here. April 19th, 2020, a special commission meeting. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is April 20th, 2021, a regular commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is April 21st, 2021, special commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D is April 22nd, 2021, a special commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
You don't need motions in seconds?
We don't. Why?
You didn't get any.
The last two we didn't have a motion.
We didn't have a motion in a second on the last two.
Sorry, I'm going so fast. Okay.
Can I make a motion for both of them?
Yeah, go make a motion for both of them.
Good.
Second, both of those.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Sorry, people, I'm really sailing along here. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $550,247.82.
Pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a comment?
Oh, I shook my head.
Okay. Item number four is reports. Item A is the auditor's accounting for the county treasurer for February 2021. And item B is the Minnehaha County Juvenile, Regional Juvenile Detention Centers 2021 First Quarter Report. Item C is Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Reports 2021. And those are all on file at the auditor's office or they're in the folder down there if you would like to look at them. Item number five is personnel actions.
Is there a motion to approve the routine personnel actions?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is abatement recommendations for approval.
I think Chris is out in the hallway.
He is out there.
Yeah.
We're waiting for Chris Lila.
Chris?
Madam Chair, you're just too fast for the rest of the county.
Chris Lila. Yeah.
We've all had our coffee this morning. We are moving along.
That was fast.
I read really fast. I apologize.
All right. Yeah, so we've got a few abatements for recommendation this morning. Item A is Southwest Mini Storage LLC, parcel number 57801, for the 2020 property taxes, the amount of $2,395.84. Unfortunately, this was a property that was damaged by the tornado that we had a couple of years ago, and we were unaware of that until a building permit was finally taken out to do that. So we're going back in time to recommend that that loss in value be abated for that time period.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Motion and a second. And we need a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Item B, I'm gonna attempt to pronounce this name, Saad Abdul Qadar Sadat, parcel number 38435, 2020 property taxes, the amount of $5,108.2. This one here is when we converted our, our information from AS400 to ProVal, there was depreciation, depreciation override that was unintentionally removed on that property. So as he discovered that, we were able to do a correction for the 21 assessment through the, through the county board action to fix that one moving forward. But we are recommending this one here, a reduction in value that should have been there. So we're recommending the abatement for $5,108.2.
Motion to approve the abatement for Mr. Sadat.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Item C and D are for South Dakota Military Heritage Alliance, Inc., parcel 91429, for the 2020 property taxes. And I believe one of them, I think there's a typo on here. One of them should be for the, let me just double check. Or did it just get entered twice? It must've just got entered twice. Oh dang it, and I looked through these, too. One should be for the...
There's two South Dakota military ones on here.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I get the right years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a typo on here. One of them should be for the 19 pay 20. And one of them should be for the 20 pay 21. So that for the 19 pay 20 should be, as an exempt entity purchased the property, it's a partial exemption from the date of their ownership. So we're recommending 8,17206. And the...
They look like they're completely separate parcels.
Oh, maybe they, oh, they are. Okay, then I am misspeaking. Why do I not have...
The legal descriptions are different.
Nope, I correct myself. Thank you, thank you, thank you. For the 20, so the information on here is correct. For the 20 pay 21, parcel number 91429 is a smaller valued property. So we're recommending the abatement of 8,17206. The other one, parcel number 24696, is the high value. That's their main building and all of that. And so we're, we're recommending an exemption amount of $93,439.70.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve parcel 91429.
And I think we can do these together, can't we, Chris?
It's the same entity?
It's the same entity, so I think we can do them together.
Okay.
And 24696.
I will add 24696 also then.
There. Second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Items E and F is for Augustana University, parcel number 50639, 2019 property tax, the amount of $336.60. And the same parcel number, but for the 2020, in the amount of $548.42. This is a property that the university had purchased, and there was a house on it, and they razed that house. So we're recommending approval on that one.
A motion on Augustana?
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement on parcel 50639 for 2019 and 2020 property taxes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Barth?
You know, green space hardly seems like an educational purpose there when it's not actually on the campus. And earlier, when the Orthodox Church wanted to keep God's earth green with a vacant land that they own, we chose not to give them any tax breaks. So I will oppose this.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Hi, Berger?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Motion passes three to one.
And items G and H are Dakota Abilities, Inc., parcel number 91416, 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,333.26, and 2020 property taxes, the amount of $13,100.38. Again, as an exempt entity had acquired the land, one is a partial exemption for that year and the other one is a full for that year. So we're recommending approval.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second on the two Dakota Ability parcels. Roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the auditor publish notice of a hearing, May 25th, 2021, for a retail on off sale malt beverage and South, South Dakota farm wine license application submitted by MZTL. I think that's just, Ben, do you have anything you want to add on that? Okay. I'd look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve publishing a notice of hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There is none. And next we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the commission about something that's not on today's agenda? No one is moving, so we will move on. Regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing for second reading and final consideration of an ordinance provided for the establishment of speed zones on the Minnehaha County highway system. Jacob, good morning.
So this replaces the, the last one, which, when we do these, we just have all of our speed zones throughout the entire county. So this just adds two. One is on County Highway 136, where Veterans Parkway connects to the interstate. We have a small section of roadway that the DOT created for us there that's signed at 45 miles an hour. And then the other one's on Highway 111, south of South Dakota 42, down to 267th Street. There's a really bad hill right here. The township contacted us, asked us if we'd do something about it. We looked at the, the vertical alignment of that, of that hill and decided that it would be appropriate to sign it at 30 miles an hour.
Any questions for Jacob? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that is opposed to these speed changes? Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? See no one? I would look for a motion from the commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
Number, item number 11 is a Second Judicial Circuit Court presentation. Judge Howman and Carl. I don't know if they, I know she's here. It's hard to hear what's going on out there. She's here. I saw her.
Yeah, I saw her, too.
Good morning.
Geez, the volume was turned down in there.
Oh, and I, I read really fast.
Okay, I guess. There we go. All right. Good morning. Robin Howman, presiding judge for the Second Judicial Circuit. I'm here just to give you a brief update about what's been going on over the last year next door at the courthouse. And again, the Second Judicial Circuit comprises Minnehaha and Lincoln County, so I do have a little bit of Lincoln County information. Even during the course of the pandemic, we've still been averaging about 1,500 visitors per day over at the courthouse. There were a couple of months last year where those numbers went down to about 800, when we excluded certain populations from the courthouse, those who didn't have hearings that day, or business that could be done online. We're projecting in the next fiscal year that we'll have over 70,000 cases. In the circuit, we do have 135 employees and a $14 million budget. That includes Minnehaha, Lincoln County, as well as our UJS budget. A number of significant developments over the year of 2020, and I'm gonna speak specifically about some of these in a minute. There's been a huge growth in our capacity for video activity and remote, remote court appearances, largely due in part to the pandemic. We also opened the jail courtroom. We call that courtroom J. That went online, I believe it was September or October of last year. And I've got some more information in a minute. It's been a huge success, not only for the courthouse staff, but for the inmates, for the jail itself, and for the population as a whole. This last legislative season, we received two additional deputy clerks for Minnehaha County. So we'll be hiring those clerks in the next month or two and having them onboard, raising our total employees actually to 138, because we also did receive another clerk in Lincoln County. After the pandemic, we're projecting now that our caseloads will grow an average of 4% per year, after a little bit of a dip last year. We also had a major expansion in electronic recording capabilities over the last year, and we now have 18 recorded courtrooms circuit wide. We continue to see rapid growth in Lincoln County as well, and we did some major security upgrades in 2020, namely an entirely new camera system for our security folks throughout the courthouse as a whole. And over the next year, we're looking at upgrading our duress alarm systems to incorporate with that camera system. This just shows you, again, what we project for what our last fiscal year was. You can see for the Second Circuit, we had just over 65,000 cases. And as I said, we're projecting an additional 5,000 over and above that in this next year. This just shows a little bit, a little bit more detail about how we expect those cases to look. We do expect just in Minnehaha County, the caseload to be slightly over 59,000, with growth showing in all three of our major areas: felony criminal misdemeanors, as well as our civil and small claims. So again, a projected growth over the next year. As I said, I was gonna mention just a little bit about Lincoln County. As I said, we expect Minnehaha County's growth to be 4% over the next year. As you can see, Lincoln County is growing considerably larger. We had anticipated, or we studied, over the last 10 years, Lincoln County has averaged a 7% to 8% growth per year in their caseload. Since last num, last year, those numbers have been trending to 19% to 33% growth per year in Lincoln County. And the reason that impacts Minnehaha County is it draws our judges away from Minnehaha County to handle more matters in Lincoln County, as well as some of our court administration staff being detailed to Lincoln County to address that huge and rapid growth. This is just a little bit of an overview of the 21 courtrooms that we have circuit wide, 18 of those here in Minnehaha County. Over the last year, due to the great success of our video appearances, at the beginning of the pandemic, I came and told you that we rapidly increased over the course of about two weeks. We tripled our capabilities to do video court appearances. And that came through us mounting TVs to carts with computers at the bottom and cameras at the top. And our staff was run ragged every day, moving those carts from courtroom to courtroom, trying to accommodate those video court appearances. And through funding at the UJS, we actually had the ability to install permanent Zoom installations in a number of our courtrooms, at least seven of those. So we don't have to wheel the carts back and forth, so that Zoom can be, in those remote court appearances, really a fixture of the courthouse moving forward. It also has some unique capabilities for attorneys, in that they can plug in their computers and have whatever's on their computer being displayed on those screens. This project was piloted in Sioux Falls and now is being expanded statewide to other courthouses, based on the success that we've had. As I mentioned, the new jail courtroom is something that we're very excited about. You see in the upper right hand corner, just a picture of that courtroom. And you can see in the bottom corner, what the public sees when they are watching the jail courtroom live from the PBS link on the internet. That's live streamed daily. It's, it's going pretty much from 8:30 in the morning until 5 o'clock at night, with a little bit of break sometime, some days over the lunch hour. But the pilot project that we had for six months has been permanently approved by the South Dakota Supreme Court. So that jail courtroom will now be a, a permanent fixture of the way we do business here in the Second Circuit. From September to February, we handled just over 4,100 cases, and that reduced the need for 8,000 transports between the jail over to the courthouse. So it really improved our security and made things a lot easier for the jail staff to get inmates to those court appearances. And then what's also amazing to us is that we averaged 77 internet viewers per day watching that live streaming. Because there is no facility for the public to be present in that courtroom, the only option we had is to livestream it over the internet and to a TV screen that we have in the lobby of the Minnehaha County courthouse. So I think it's really improved people's access to be able to view those proceedings that go on in that courtroom. And as I mentioned, we had 18 courtrooms circuit wide, 15 in Minnehaha County, that were, as part of that Zoom upgrade, we also incorporated our CourtSmart technology. I think over the last couple of years, we've probably mentioned during this presentation of the decline in availability of court reporting schools and court reporters to fill court reporting positions. So we just kind of made the decision that we really need to plan for our future and for not having the ability to have a live body in the courtroom, making a record of what goes on in the courtroom. So we did greatly expand our ability to have CourtSmart in 15 courtrooms here in the Minnehaha County courthouse. And just some impressive detail about our expansion of video and remote court appearances. Over that three month period, we had actively 30 UJS users, meaning 30 individual people, judges, court staff, and others within the courthouse, using Zoom accounts. We had a total number of 500 meetings or hearings that we conducted by Zoom during those 90 days. Of those 500 hearings, there were 2,800 separate participants, and the number of meeting minutes is just under 170,000 meeting minutes. So that just goes to show you, one of the things that we really believed during the course of the pandemic, is that our courthouses are meant to be open. The Constitution doesn't give us a pass for pandemics, and we really believed that we needed to keep the courthouse open and accessible to the public. And this just shows how we've been able to do that, to allow people to appear remotely and to be able to do the business that we do in the courthouse. Then I also wanted to just touch very briefly on the JDC hearing room. Over the course of the pandemic, that hearing room was not used. There were also some pretty substantial security concerns about that hearing room. And so in progress right now is a temporary remodel of that space that will give us the ability for a short period of time to utilize that courtroom there. I believe the courtroom will be completed within the next couple of weeks, and we should be handling court there by the end of May. So that concludes the brief presentation that I had for today. Are there any questions? Questions for Judge Howman, Commissioner Bennigan?
Judge Howman, I'm curious, on the Lincoln County growth, do you keep track of that with what is growing supposedly from 57th Street in the city of Sioux Falls, south versus the rural communities?
It is entirely growth within Harrisburg to South Sioux Falls.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Judge, it's great to have you here. So with the changes that, in operations that you've had because of the pandemic, are, are there some economies that will follow on and, and keep costs from rising further? Can you get by with fewer judges?
I can not get by with fewer judges.
I figure you probably need more judges.
We do need, we do need more judges, simply because of the growth in the caseload.
But utilizing them more effectively or efficiently with the technologies and, and also with the people that we leave in jail. I mean, fewer people are in jail.
That is true.
And, and that's gotta be some savings to everybody.
It, it's not really a savings, at least on the court side of the system, because whether somebody's in jail or out of jail, we still have to process those cases. So that's really dependent on the number of cases. And until cases go down, we really can't be more efficient. The efficiency comes on the side of the jail, not having to transport all of those inmates over to the courthouse. It also comes by way of people who can appear remotely for appearances. For instance, I, while I was waiting, I just got a request on a child support and child custody matter, to have a parent who lives out of state appear remotely for a hearing. We also have requests for attorneys who may live or work outside of Sioux Falls to appear remotely. So that's really where we see the savings and the economies for individuals.
One more question, then. Do we need another courtroom building, like the one you're currently occupying?
For Minnehaha County?
Yeah.
Well, we probably will have to talk about some forward thinking over the next five, 10, 15 years, if that growth continues, what it's going to look like. You know, we're pretty limited on space. Right now, if we were to, for instance, have a new judge, an additional circuit court judge be appointed to Minnehaha County, my option would be to kick out our IT staff, which is crucial to our daily operations, or the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court.
Good luck.
Right. I'm not looking forward to having to make that decision.
Commissioner Bender?
So I'm, I'm looking back at your slide that detailed the caseload from Minnehaha County from 2014 to 2021.
Yes.
And I think it's understandable for most people that the cases would have dipped during the pandemic a little bit. But the cases actually dipped in 2019.
Right.
Prior to that. Do you have a theory on, on why that happened?
I can tell you, you can see it's in criminal and traffic caseload. For whatever reason, the only thing we can identify for that particular year is that we're 6,000 or 7,000 fewer traffic type tickets were issued. Now, that seems like a high case number, a number of cases, but they're ve, very low maintenance for court staff. It's, it's really in the nature of, of traffic violations. Those, so those aren't things that really take up court time. So they didn't really make a difference in what we perceived as our caseload. But there was a decline, and, and that's what we can attribute that to over the course of those two years.
So if that was broken out, that, I'm looking at a different slide than that's up there right now. I'm looking at the Minnehaha County slide. I think that's the link, yeah, that one.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
So that red line, if we broke out traffic violations from the criminal charges, it would, it would show a divergence?
Yes. I think it would show a very different projection.
Okay. And you guys just reported out that way because that's how your software tracks?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So you mentioned that you're using CourtSmart, and most of them's...
So you mentioned that you're using CourtSmart in most of them, so do we still need to have all those CourtSmarts transcribed?
Yes, we still do.
So are you outsourcing that since there's less people to do it?
Transcription of CourtSmart is generally done by our CourtSmart operators. We do have the ability then for our court reporters who are actually employed in the courthouse to do some of those transcripts as well. So I'm not aware that we've ever had to outsource getting those transcripts completed.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Judge, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
And I get to stand up here for the next one.
You do.
Because your agenda should say me instead of Erin Serska, but she's very close by.
Item number 12.
Because you might have questions that I can't answer that she could.
Item number 12 is a briefing on the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge Grant.
Erin wasn't the only one close by.
Right. The whole team from MacArthur Foundation. All right, and the two things that I primarily wanted to speak with you today about the Safety and Justice Challenge and the benefits that they've brought to Minnehaha County are the pretrial staff as well as the staff position through Alliance. We've talked a number of times about the PSAs. That's the pre-risk assessment tool that our judges are able to use at the time when they're making bond decisions. And this just gives you a little bit of a historical overview of the number of PSAs that have been ordered or completed each of those years versus the number of people who have had a PSA. So for instance, if we look at 2020, you see that there are a total of 6,904 PSAs that were ordered. Those were ordered on 4,496 separate people. So a number of those people had more than one PSA done, whether that was because they had additional charges or came in on arrest on some other type of warrant. So that's just how those numbers are reported. And then what's in blue is the 2,123 individuals, and that's the number of times that there was a violence flag that was indicated on those risk assessment tools. The second chart that talks about outcomes of the PSAs, that gives you some information about pending rearrest, failure to appear, whether or not their rearrest was violent, if that individual was noncompliant, if the case was dismissed, and which ones of those individuals were successful. What I'd really like you to focus on, though, is the numbers for 2020. The data that we have for 2018 and 2019, there's two reasons that those numbers look sort of strange. The first reason is that there's still a number of 2018 and 2019 cases that have not been concluded. One of those reasons is because of the pandemic. We've lost a lot of folks to failures to appear, and they just haven't come back through the system. The other reason those numbers look a little bit strange is just recently, within the last couple of months, the PSA team has been able to close out cases once somebody has completed their case. And so we haven't gone back and been able to close out all of the cases that may be concluded for 2018 and 2019. So I just wanted to point that out, so you don't get the impression that our success rate is lower now than it has been in the past. There's just a number of cases that are still outstanding where we're not able to reflect what the ultimate outcome has been.
Do you mind just defining what success is?
Success is not getting rearrested and showing up for court. So those are really the two things that judges consider when addressing bond for anybody, is are you likely to appear for your next court date, and how likely are you to get rearrested? So our success is defined by those two things not happening. So if you look for 2020, in my view, I see that as 559 people who may not otherwise have been successful in showing up to court and not getting rearrested. So I see those as really very good outcomes, because, you know, we have that information now and we didn't have it in the past.
Can I ask you a dumb question? What does FTA stand for?
Failure to Appear.
Okay. You made that assumption.
It is, it is not a dumb question at all. We lots of times use those abbreviations and assume people know what we mean. So when we look at the PSAs that have been done, we identified the top five most frequent charges that people were charged with, and this just gives you kind of a historical overview of what those charges are and the number of people who are charged. And my apologies, when we printed this out above frequency, it should be 2018, 2019, and 2020. So you can see a couple of different things. First, you can see that between 2019 and 2020, we had kind of a substantial decline in the number of people who were charged with possession of a controlled substance. That's very much due to COVID. What you see on the flip side is the charges that have gone up substantially are the simple assault domestic that you see at the bottom, where those charges have at least doubled during the course of the pandemic. So I don't know what that really tells you, other than people aren't getting arrested as much for possession of a controlled substance. I think that's just because law enforcement reduced the number of contacts with people intentionally, but you do see, as a result of the pandemic, what we had kind of been supposing all along is that there was a dramatic increase in assault-related behavior. Another great tool that we have because of the MacArthur Foundation is the court reminders that pretrial services staff have been sending out to people. What it means at the bottom, you see failed and success. What the failed means is just that we didn't have accurate information for these people. I think I've mentioned before, one of the difficulties we had with these court reminders is finding accurate contact information from people, and so the jail has really done a great job in trying to get that information from people upon their release from the jail, as opposed to the time of arrest. But we still do have improvements that we need to make in that. But I think these are really great numbers, showing the number of times that people were provided with court reminders in the 4,000s over the last several months. So that's, you know, 4,000-plus court reminders that are going out each month. Also, as part of the Safety and Justice Challenge, which isn't reflected here, we did have the UJS design a new feature on our website where people can go to that website, enter their name and date of birth, and find out also when their court dates are. And from January to March 23rd of 2021, since that went online, we had over 3,500 people use that website as well. So we're really hoping that the combination of all of these efforts will reduce our failures to appear long into the future. Now, when we flip to pretrial monitoring, again, I want to remind you that pretrial monitoring started about January, February of last year, so just in time for COVID. So we really feel like our pretrial monitoring didn't get a fair shake the first six or eight months of 2020. But what you can see here is that we had a total of 433 people who were on pretrial monitoring. 230 of those, we consider a success. There were 98 individuals who failed to appear, and 105 of those individuals had other arrests or warrants. Now, what I'd like to caution you on here, again, with these numbers, is the other arrest and warrant data might not indicate that that person was rearrested on charges that occurred while they were on pretrial monitoring. So someone gets arrested, they come to court, and a judge puts them on pretrial monitoring services. They may be arrested while they're on pretrial for charges that occurred before the case that they were put on pretrial monitoring for. I don't know if that makes sense, but there are quite a number of occasions and times where somebody may have committed an act, and an arrest or an indictment doesn't follow for several months, or sometimes even years. So we're not able to pull that data out to show who actually was arrested on new charges that occurred during their pretrial monitoring, because we just, we just haven't been able to figure out how to mine the data to figure that out. I know, Commissioner Bender, you were having a question.
Well, I just wonder, you know, I think that a lot of times when we live in the world, you understand what things mean, but if you don't, you have no idea.
Right.
So can you explain what pretrial monitoring even is?
Sure, sure. So pretrial monitoring is the service that we started about last January or February, where a judge can identify a person who may have remained in jail prior to pretrial monitoring services. And when somebody goes through that PSA, they get a risk score, and based on that risk score, they're identified for a level of monitoring. This is, this is the chart that we have. So if somebody has a pretrial risk score of 6.6, they're in this corner. If they have a 1.1, they're here. And this just identifies the number of times that individual has to have contact with pretrial staff each month or each week. So if somebody is a great risk to either be rearrested or fail to appear, they might have to check in with pretrial staff once a week. Those check-ins can be over the phone, via text message, or via email. They can be in person. And so that's just a way for us to keep track of people who we may have kept in jail previously because we were afraid that they'd have a new charge or they wouldn't show up for court. So this pretrial staff that has been funded through the MacArthur Foundation and now Minnehaha County as well, they're the individuals who send out those court reminders. They're the individuals who a defendant on pretrial services will check in with weekly, biweekly, monthly, just to make sure we know where they're at, that they know when their court dates are.
Thank you.
Okay. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, no, it did. Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to point out about these figures is that, for instance, there is one person that we had who had 22 separate warrants. And some of those warrants were for new charges, some of those warrants were for failing to appear at court. So we try to provide the data, but still, it needs to account for those kind of situations where we have somebody who just has a lot of involvement with the criminal justice system. So the numbers may be a little bit skewed to reflect some of that. So what we've tried to do here is give a little bit more information about the outcomes. The first graph is about the number of people, and the second graph is the number of cases. So like I mentioned, there are some people who have multiple cases pending, so we just tried to provide the data. You see, the successes are still the same at 230. We have 156 unique persons, but of those people, they had 322 cases that were on pretrial monitoring. So that just gives you a little bit of a different view of the data we had on the prior slide.
And you have to tell me what POA is, because I don't remember POA.
Those, those are like traffic tickets.
Okay.
And then on pretrial, the average length of stay on pretrial, this tells you the various levels of pretrial supervision, again, what this grid shows us, the number of people who got off pretrial services on each of those levels, and the average length of days that they were on pretrial services. Now, this is about the Alliance-funded position through the MacArthur Foundation. There is a total of 35 individuals who were served. Of those 35, 19 people during the reporting period were unique to the Alliance program. That means a number of them were people who have been through Alliance services before, have been connected to various services within our community. What I think is really interesting to note is what you see, that inpatient number of nine. Those nine individuals are people who were involved sometimes at least once a week, either in one of our emergency rooms, coming out of our detox center, or coming out of our sobering center. And so just focusing on those nine people, I know we're trying to get the calculations now of what that saves the county and the emergency room departments for just having those nine individuals who have been in inpatient treatment. Seven of them have transitioned to residential services. A couple of them have transitioned out to intensive outpatient treatment. And you see that the case managers provided just over 250 hours of service to each of those clients. And so I think, once we get those numbers on what dollars that's saving, I think we'll be pretty astounded on that. And again, this looks at the 35 people coming out of detox, sobering, and the ERs regularly, multiple times per month. And then the next steps are, again, getting some of this data that I just mentioned, the hospital stay and jail stay, so we can figure out what savings have been from this funded position. We're also looking forward to working with the link, once it opens here within the next couple of weeks, to provide additional services to people who are similarly situated to these I've just mentioned. There'll be a budget request then, in the near future, for the county to continue for half a FTE. And again, the same for pretrial, we're going to continue to work with our justice partners, continue to gather some of this data to make sure that the program is effective, which we believe it has been. And again, there'll be a budget request coming up from the Sheriff's Department for half of a full-time employee to continue those services.
The Alliance program is under Human Services.
Yes.
And the pretrial is now under the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Bender?
So I just, you know, for, to put it in the vernacular, I think all of this is criminal justice reform. We hear about criminal justice reform all the time, and I think people don't think that Minnehaha County is involved in it, and this shows that we're very heavily involved in it, thanks in large part to the MacArthur Foundation and the initial funding that they've been able to provide to us, but we've been involved in it a long time before that and have really, I mean, it's a great story to tell, and it's a hard story to tell to kind of help people understand it, but this was very helpful in, you know, giving some data behind it. But it's, you know, it's also just shows that it's hard, hard work, you know? I mean, Alliance, you think, you know, nine people, that doesn't seem like very many people. And you see how many hours that Alliance folks spent with those folks. That's, that's a lot of investment in man-hours and in dollars, but there is a lot of, you know, countervailing savings that comes apart across to the county from fewer jail time, fewer, you know, time spent in detox, savings for the hospital systems. So I just really want to thank everybody in the room that's here today for doing that hard work, and I just hope that we, as commissioners, can do a better job of telling that story so that people understand, you know, what is going on behind the scenes, so.
It is an incredible story, and it did start quite a number of years ago with the initial MacArthur Foundation grant that was the innovation grant that allowed all of the backstory and the research to occur, to find out what points in our judicial system or our justice system that we needed to make some changes. And that's all coming to fruition now with the link and some of these programs. So we have been at it, and it has been successful, and I think the community probably doesn't quite understand what it's all about.
The link was more or less born out of money that MacArthur Grant gave us. It was, it was an idea that came out of Human Services and the Sheriff's Office, and then was be able to put, we were able to put that together way faster because we had some money from MacArthur Grant, and we have been working at this a really long time. And it is a really hard story to tell, because I meet with Judge Homan once to twice every month, and it's really hard to convey to everyone else what's going on behind the scenes. If there are no other questions, I also want to recognize all the people that are in the room that you probably can't see if you're watching from home, that work with MacArthur Grant. We have a contract with USD School of Medicine, and they have four staff people, for sure, four, maybe more, that work regularly with us, putting the data together and making sure we're on track with our grant and keeping track of how things are working. And staff a lot, a lot of meetings for us to make sure this is working. So thank you, ladies, for being here and for the work you do. Are there any more questions that I'm missing?
The only curious question I have is on your most frequent charges, and there's a doubling of 19 to 20. Can we assume that some of that's related to the COVID-related issues, because frankly, people are in house arrest for 15 months?
Well, yes. I think that certainly with the possession of a controlled substance, you see the decline because there were a decline in the number of police contacts with individuals. But being cooped up with your family has resulted in that last line, a substantial increase in the amount of assault-related behavior, which doesn't seem to be ending. I just performed my duties as the probable cause reviewer for all of the people who are were arrested over the weekend and remained in jail. Our judges rotate looking at those arrest reports each weekend, and I think there were about 40 arrest reports that I looked at. I think three of them were possession of a controlled substance, and over half were assault-related behavior.
Very sad.
It's amazing, in my line of work, regular line of work, we've been told multiple times, and we're seeing it now, about issues with depression and mental health-related issues because people have been cooped up for so long that it's affected their mental health.
And the violence, because they're just frustrated and angry, a lot of anger going on.
I just would say that, along with our predecessors, that especially like you deserve a lot of credit for moving this kind of thing forward, along with, with the rest of us, but Erin Surtzka and, and others that have, and the judicial system. It's, it is a complicated thing to explain, and I hope people take a moment and try to learn more about it. At the same time, probably the people that know the most are the ones that are currently involved in, in the judicial system in some way.
Right. And I'd also just like to mention that the MacArthur Foundation has a Safety and Justice Challenge going on all across the country. There are many jurisdictions who participate in the Safety and Justice Challenge. And the really great thing about the challenge that I found is there's lots of ideas that come as a result of all of these groups getting together and research being provided by the MacArthur Foundation. But we're allowed with our grant funding to make sure that our Safety and Justice Challenge fits Minnehaha County and that it fits South Dakota. So there are some ideas that are being done in other jurisdictions as part of the Safety and Justice Challenge, but those really don't have anything to do with South Dakota or Minnehaha County because we've identified with all of our justice partners what makes sense for our community, and those are just the things that we've been talking about today.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you ladies for coming. That will move on to item number 313, which is a briefing of the Human Services Department. Carrie Benz.
All right. Good morning. Carrie Benz with Human Services. So I'm going to follow that up with other good news, which is kind of exciting. So I just want to do a little bit of a visit from yesterday to today to tomorrow. So it's really kind of getting prepared for the 2022 budget. So obviously, all of us were challenged in 2020 with the pandemic, and that certainly includes Human Services. The bulk of really what we really had to contend with was trying to mitigate the pandemic. By February of 2020, we were in need for precautions. It was starting to arrive in Sioux Falls, and so by March of 2020, the city called for the state of emergency. And in doing so, our office became a part of the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And then we also started housing and focusing on the vulnerable population, which was the homeless and those that were being underserved in our community. We engaged in a city partnership and really started looking at how do we best serve that population? So as far as Human Services stood, we were the front-runner in regards to housing those individuals and assuring that those being tested for COVID, those that were awaiting results and those that tested positive, we actually housed all those individuals during that period of time. And then by April, it brought the social distancing, and that really brought to us the challenge of working from a distance. How do we do that when Human Services is working with humans? That was our job. We meet with people, we deal with people. It limited our face-to-face meetings, we weren't able to do that as much, and it minimized our ability to do outreach. And if anybody's been a part of Human Services or been, ever been to our office, outreach is a huge component of our office. We don't just, we don't sit in our office and we don't wait for people to come to us. We go to people to assure that we can do outreach and provide service. And then it also lent us some time, because we weren't able to do as much outreach, to really step back and evaluate our system. And what were we doing well, what weren't we doing well? We identified that we had numerous unresolved medical liability issues. We had multiple cases that just haven't been resolved for a number of reasons. We were able to look at and process what our gaps were in those services and in that process. We had a desire to be more accessible and consumer-friendly. How do we actually be with the people when we can't be with people? And then also, it challenged us to, our limited clean data. We have a number of reports that our IT department has helped us develop. However, the sad part of it is, is we also have been challenged on trying to have clean data. Because as you know, with every time we update a system or every time we update how we collect data, it kind of convolutes the previous data. So yesterday's solutions become today's challenges. So we decided that during the pandemic, we were going to face challenge with change, and we decided it was time. So we established our mitigation plans. Obviously, we needed to make sure that what plans we did have, we were able to provide a safe environment as well as for our staff. Safe Home has now implemented an infectious disease mitigation plan, as you may or may not recall. Not only during the pandemic where we faced with COVID-19, which I just want to highlight, our Safe Home team, we had no COVID-19 residents. It didn't arrive for us. All residents maintained health. So that was very exciting. But we also faced at Safe Home an outbreak of TB. And so we had to work with the state during that pandemic, but we self-safely traveled through that, and everyone has recovered and all are doing well, received treatment. And then our office also developed two teams, Team A and Team B. We knew that in order to keep the social distancing alive and being able to provide service at a safe level, we needed to have Team A that worked from home, Team B that was in the office, and then every other week, we swapped. And so that's how we really mitigated that need to be socially distanced, but yet provide service. And then we also decided that it was really time for us to be online. We needed to come into the 2000s and be more available and accessible to people. So we continued working remotely, but we increased our mobility. And moving forward, that's one of the proud pieces that we have, is that we will be more mobile. We expanded our communication mediums. We have really accessed our website, on the county website for Human Services. We have numerous messages and emails that happen in communicating with clients, which really wasn't as much as it used to be as what it is now. We've started accessing, having video chats with those that are in jail. Our Alliance program, as you briefly heard about just a bit ago from Judge. We have started communicating with those individuals via camera. So now we can still provide that service, but we don't have to actually be inside the jail since they have really limited access for obvious reasons. And then obviously, we've had Zoom meetings, as all of you have had probably too many Zoom meetings. But I will say that has been a real asset for us, and we have continued, we've never had to close our doors at Human Services. We never stepped away from our responsibilities. And then our expansion of collaborative partnerships, we're incredibly proud of that this past, this past year. We worked with the city to have a recovery center. So all of those individuals who were being tested, awaiting results, and tested positive, we successfully housed those. We worked with LSS as we transitioned our role that we had had in housing those individuals and doing case management. We successfully transferred that over to LSS. Because as we know, my philosophy is that the government belongs where we belong and we don't belong where we don't belong. And there was community resources that could actually provide those services and get paid for those services. So why would we continue to do that service when others can, other nonprofits can be involved and provide that service? We also started weekly calls with the shelters. We never abandoned any of those providers. We also had regular calls with congregate living facilities like the Glory House, the Arch. For a while during the pandemic, they were kind of some hotspots, and we started seeing that. So we started calls in helping them identify and establish some mitigation plans so they now internally can manage their own traffic when it comes to managing COVID. And then we also partnered with the city and their One Sioux Falls Fund and administered those funds successfully. We've gotten thousands and thousands of dollars out into our community successfully to maintain housing and to assure that our community is taken care of. And then streamlining our process and protocols, since we had the time, we've really looked at our protocols. We've resolved medical liability. I believe when I visited with Kim last, we were just over a million dollars that we've been able to remove in liability. So we've been very successful with updating our protocols. And moving forward, that will change, and we will actually be processing those medical bills on an annual basis in hopes to every year having those resolved as quickly as possible. Some of those variables, we don't have control over, especially if an individual isn't willing to work with us to do that. And then also executing our technology, updating our technology. Our online app went live yesterday. We're incredibly excited. We're working with a company, FormSite, and they have been incredibly helpful, and we're actually looking at trying to find a way to have our application translated online by actually just checking a box of what language you need, and then it automatically would just appear in that language. So we're working on that. It hasn't happened yet, but we're excited. We do have the Spanish version of our application also online. That one is not online, it's one that they can print off and, and send in, but that one will be translated into that online version. It just takes us a copious amount of time to be able to do that. So, but that's happening. We're incredibly excited about that. And then also for the software update, we're really looking at how do we best serve our community other than being able to ask them what they need? So our consumer survey went online as well yesterday. So regardless of whether they've come in or not, they're able to actually provide us feedback in regards to our services. So that's online as well. So the impact to the 2022 budget with all of that, we'll be purchasing additional technology. Our classrooms and conference rooms have already been updated, and we host numerous Zoom meetings in there. And those meetings really do allow us to have better wraparound services for people, so that's been imperative. It's also been imperative for us to show support for our community providers and our colleagues in other agencies. It really brings us together and allows us to provide the best of service for our community members. And then also our lobby and front desk redesign. Our plan is to actually have stations that when people arrive, all of our applications will be done online. So we will no longer have to have paper applications. We have copious amounts of files. I think we're nearing the 200,000 mark, and so we just need to thin out that use of paper. So with that redesign, we'll be able to do that and I think better serve our customers and the individuals that need our assistance. The staffing part, obviously, it was just mentioned to you that there is a .5 FTE or part-time staff that will need to graduate into our budget for HS. It was half-funded by MacArthur this past year, or for this year, I should say. And so for the budget year of 2022, we would need to assume full responsibility for that FTE. For the medical process, it really, our goal in this is really to stay up to date with cases so that we don't have that ever-growing liability. We've been able to resolve so many cases and now have set up a process with the hospitals. And so our ability to process applications and to look through those cases to establish decisions much more quickly has been established, and we're in pursuit of that as we speak. And then for the COVID-19 response, there's been so much funding that has been brought into our state by numerous streams. I will say that our office is a little bit worried that there is so much frontline, the kind of the front-end assistance, the emergency assistance, that we've somewhat lost sight of the need for that long-term assistance, right? And the, the long-term support. And when I say long-term support, I don't necessarily even mean financially. I think that the case management piece and that follow-along piece is being lost. There's so much money being invested in the rent and the mortgage and the utilities, and not saying that those things aren't needed, but there is assistance provided for that already in our community. And I get concerned that then people become so reliant on that, that we then forget how to budget and how to plan long-term. So those frontline staff are really struggling with how do we help carry people past just that short time, right? So you'll see some budget changes in that arena as well. And then just to kind of finish up with the community impact of all of the services that we've had, the accessibility, being online means that we have the ability to have a mobile application. So not only can you do it, our application, from a desktop, you can also do it from the phone. So no matter where you are, you can make application and you can see our website. Staff can now be mobile and take applications everywhere, so our outreach has resumed. We're back into the shelters, we're back in, kind of back into the jail slowly but surely. And we become incredibly consumer-friendly. We realize that at times it's difficult with transportation issues, sometimes it's childcare issues, sometimes it's just simply the hours that people work, that they have a hard time making it to our office. This will enable them to be connected to us. And I just want to highlight the accessibility. We obviously have numerous programs within HS, and I certainly am not going to touch on each of them today, but I do want to highlight our VSO, our Veteran Services Officer. Just taking to, bringing to you a few of her statistics in this past year. Even with COVID, she had 284 office visits, 774 phone calls. She put in and submitted 395 claims for veterans, which equated to $2,835,000 that she was able to have arrive at vet's door for, for their assistance. And so she really, she really kicked tail. She really did a great job, even in trying to navigate COVID. Then when it comes to the collaboration and establishing partnerships, it provides us the ability to assure wraparound supportive services from emergency to our navigation. ER is the one team that is obviously our steadfast, they're the core of who we are. But we also then have people that need assistance in navigating our system within the community to find and locate housing and supportive services. We have a team that provides case management, not only to homeless families, but to those individuals that are exiting the criminal justice system. It optimizes our potential outcomes for those we collectively serve with our community partners. We've established team meetings, not only for our homeless families, but for those that are involved in the criminal justice system. They're multifaceted teams, and so those teams provide support to one another, not only to one another, but to the clients themselves. And so we do provide that wraparound, excellent communication, much better programming and partnerships, provide for those optimal outcomes. And it also then addresses the last note there of the duplication of services. We really avoid that because we know who's doing what, when, and how. And so that, through that communication and through those supportive programs coming together, we're able to best serve those that come into our office as well as into the offices of others. And then lastly, our software data collection and reporting. Our corrections have allowed us to accurately depict what services we provide as well as providing us guidance in identifying what services are needed in our community. It assesses, or assesses outcomes and where improvements need to take place. We know that the landscape of Sioux Falls is ever-changing as well as the composition of what our residents need. And so with that, those reports, we're able to better address those needs. And then also, it provides us insight into where and how to best invest. We know that the funds that we receive are from our community, and so we... And so we know that our job and our role is to support those in our community that need it, but to be also good stewards of those funds that we receive. So lastly, that's just our vision statement. We advocate empower, partner and support. And that's really the role of HS. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Carrie, it's great to have this report and it's actually reminding me of so many of the things that you guys have to do. And, you know, juxtaposing this with the previous report, the county takes care of the naughty and the needy. And, you know, as we look at this, there are so many things, the One Sioux Falls Fund, the Veteran Service Officer. I incidentally, without asking for anything, people tell me about help they've gotten from her. And, you know, I do have questions about the medical liability.
Yeah.
I know that at some point we were, the hospitals were after us for tens of millions of dollars. Are they still wanting that kind of an amount? You may not want to reveal the number, but is, is that accurate?
I will say this, I won't speak for the hospitals themselves, but what I will say is that obviously, the medical care for individuals without insurance is incredibly expensive. And so obviously, they, they need to do what they need to do. That's what their, their mission to do. However, we also know that in partnering with them, we can provide good quality care. And county, we step in where we need to step in, where we have that responsibility. We do a great job of exploring any other resources that they can access. As part of our budget, we do have an assist with Cobra on occasion so that people can get insurance. That's probably a song that we have sang long and loud, is that everybody should have insurance. It really isn't a privilege. It should be that everybody has insurance so that they get the medical care that they need because without the medical care, it just continues to grow in regards to severity and then bills get larger. So as far as them, the hospitals pursuing us for money, yes. I don't know that they'll ever not pursue us for funds. But I also think that over the course of, I'll just say in the period that I've been director, and my predecessors certainly have attempted to their best as well to mitigate that. In my time, we really have set up a really good relationship where they now come in and we share records. We share information. We put together the data so that collectively, we can actually utilize the forms and the formula that we have, that we're commissioned to use as a means to determining whether someone's eligible or not. So we've really streamlined a lot of that process. So although yes, they would like us to probably pay more than what we do, I also think that they have a better, more clear understanding of where we are and what our role is.
Less adversarial than it maybe had been in the past?
Absolutely, yes.
That's great to hear.
Absolutely, yes.
Let me just go on a moment here. I've actually had outside individuals tell me that we need another Safe Home in town.
Oui. You know, here's what I would say. I, I absolutely believe in Safe Home. I'm a huge advocate, obviously, having been with HS the, the time that we developed Safe Home. I don't know that Safe Homes are the answer for so many. I think that with a lot of the reform that we're doing in the criminal justice system as well as the world being more open to addressing mental health and substance abuse, I'm hoping that we're going to do a better job on the front end and we actually do interventions much more quickly so that we prevent people from getting to the point of needing a place like Safe Home. I'm hopeful that with the services that we can and do provide now and with those that we further develop down the road, I'm hopeful that we don't need another Safe Home.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Carrie, for coming.
Thank you much.
Item number 14 is a briefing on the American Recovery Fund. Our auditor, Mr. Kite?
Our wonderful auditor.
Our wonderful auditor.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yeah, so I think some of you may have been contacted by our community partners out there about the interest in the, in the stimulus program and how it might impact Minnehaw County. So we thought we should take this opportunity to kind of give you a briefing on that and what we understand about it at this point. So back on March 11th, Congress passed the American Rescue Fund. And that was a total stimulus plan of about $1.9 trillion. Of that, $350 billion of it is being awarded to state, local, territorial and tribal governments. As we drill down to that a little bit more, $65 billion-ish is identified for counties. And then they, they have kind of give us an estimate at what Minnehaw County might be able to receive. And it's currently estimated around $37.5 million of funds that could come our way. So it's a little bit different in, in prior stimulus funds because those, these funds will be sent directly to the counties. And we will be required at some point to make an application for that. So you should expect Auditor's Office, if somebody come back to you, asking for permission to apply for these funds in the near future. The first payment of those, of these funds is required to be sent within 60 days of the enactment of the bill. So it's March 11th by May 11th. You'd, they should be sending those funds. So the US Treasury has given us some guidelines or guidance on how to prepare for this, which, you know, providing them our financial account information, that sort of thing. We've got that ready. So the first half would come within 60 days and the second half of the payment would come within, no, earlier than 12 months after that first payment. So if we're going to get, if we got 37 million, you know, 17 and a half million-ish would come our way sometime over the next couple of months. And then the remainder would come at least 12 months after that. And then what could we use these funds for? So again, you know, the stimulus program was designed in a national, with a national perspective, not so much just on Minnehaw County. But the guidance that we've seen so far is that we could use the funds to respond to or mitigate the public health emergency and with respect to the COVID-19 emergency or its negative economic impacts. We could use it to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue, make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure, and respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency. So that's broadly what it, the funds could be used for. That's where we need guidance from US Treasury on what that, those things specifically mean. They do provide for some guardrails where, where we could not use the funds. So states will not be allowed to use the funds to offset reduction in the net tax revenue. So basically, I read that as you can't lower people's taxes for use, for the use of these funds. No funds shall be deposited into any pension fund. And then failure to comply with the federal law and regulated guidelines will require repayment of the funds. So as I mentioned earlier, US Treasury has provided some guidance, what county should take to, what would take to receive the, the recovery funds. And Minnehaw County, along with all the other counties in the US, they're awaiting further guidance from the US Treasury on how to use these funds. And I think that's probably the, the real story here is we, everybody around the country is waiting for some guidance and on, on how, how can they interpret the allowable use of funds? Where, where will they be, be able to be applied? That concludes my briefing. You have any questions?
Have any questions on this? Commissioner Barth?
Auditor Kite, are we ready to spend any of these funds yet?
At this point, no. We, without any guidance on where those funds could be spent, we don't have any identified uses.
So if we get the guidance in four or five years, do we still deserve to give credit to President Biden and our federal legislators?
Yeah, not for me to decide. One thing I, I should note that once the funds are received, we will have up to three years, so by the end of 2024, to spend those. So it's a relatively short period of time. And you think about it, it is a program, stimulus program. They want to get the funds out there in, in the communities and being spent. So, you know, any larger projects might be doubtful, right? You need to be kind of shovel-ready type of projects so we could get those spent within that three-year timeframe.
Madam Chair, it just makes me crabby that they're all getting credit for giving us this money and there's not a darn thing that we're able to spend it on today, tomorrow, next month?
Also note that all of them, all funds that we would accept would be under the guidelines of the federal, federal law, federal guidelines and everything. And so there'd probably be a ton of paperwork too to do to make sure you're compliant with all federal law.
Yeah, very good point, right? I think the federal guidelines are much more stringent. You know, if you had some sort of construction project, it might require environmental, environmental impact statements or studies, stuff like that, which we don't, didn't have in the past with state funds.
Thank you. Thank you for the briefing. I'm sure we will hear more in the future. That will go on to item number 15, which is Minnehaw County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barth?
We had planning commission last night in this office and went only until 8:45. Got to see the full moon. Our hottest item was a fireworks stand over there near the Split Rock Fire Station. And it's going to be a permanent building and there are going to be sprinkler system in it. Most of these fireworks stands are built a little more like a tent or shack without any of that kind of stuff. But the sprinkler system makes it easier for them to store product in between selling it. And they were going to go 12 months a year or something like that and are doing much less. And finally, I would say that it was David Heinhold's last meeting as working for the county. He'll be departing for Indiana, his home state, for a new job in the same business.
Did not know that. Any other liaison reports? Item number 16, any new business? Commissioner, can I go?
I would just say that in the last week, I was asked by the House Majority Leader to participate statewide with the Juvenile Justice Oversight Council. And I did agree to do that. I think that is benefit to the county and I'm looking forward to join that group to help solve some of those issues.
Welcome aboard. It's not a committee I'm on. Thank you. Item number 17, any old business? Just a reminder that tonight at 5 o'clock is a joint city council, county commission meeting and we will be looking at the Museum Enterprise Fund and a planning and zoning issue that connects both, that's in, in the joint jurisdiction between the city and the county. And that is at 5 o'clock tonight at the city chambers. So with that, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session immediate, well, actually for a recess. Ask for a recess to go into executive session.
Motion to recess.
Second. Motion and a second to recess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I don't know what to tell you. Five to 10 minutes as soon as we can clear the room.
Thank you.